Madam Clerk, can you hear me?
Alderman Florian.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager. Press your spacebar. Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner. Did we lose him?
He's rebooting and he's logging back in.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
We're waiting for Alderman Turner.
You get Alderman Taylor?
Aye. I hope so. Did I get you? Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
As always, we're going to give about thirty seconds for Alderman Kirkwood to correction Alderman Turner to appear on the screen. As we do that, to lead us tonight in invocation, again will be our own Alderman Bolton. And immediately following that, we all will stand and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Bolton.
It will be Edith Newsom tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry.
In location.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom. I apologize.
Let me know when you're ready.
Following your cue, ma'am.
Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Father, I just thank you for this day. I thank you for allowing us to see another day in spite of everything that's going on in our community and in our city and our world, Father God. I thank you for allowing us to still be here. I just ask that your hand of protection will continue to be with our first responders, police and fire, all those at the hospitals working with this COVID-19, all our essential workers that are there to supply our essential needs. I also thank you, Father God, for all the volunteers that are out in the community, making sure that the needs of our community are met with food and masks and gloves and whatever else they need, Father. I thank you for the organizations that are going out to feed our essential workers. I thank you for them and I ask that you will continue to bless them. I ask, Father God, right now that you would continue to grace our mayor with all that he needs, wisdom and knowledge to move our city forward in this unprecedented time. And I ask, Father God, that you will continue to grace us as aldermen with what we need to serve our constituents to the best of our ability. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. All rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Did Alderman Turner reappear?
No.
Okay. All right, as far as mayor's comments for tonight, mine's gonna be very simple. I want to just kind of echo what Alderman Newsom said with the prayer. We have some amazing people who are doing some amazing things throughout this country, this state, certainly in the city of Waukegan. And I just want to let them know that we truly appreciate what you're doing. Now, we were talking about our essential workers from our police, our fire, all of our hospital staff, from the nurses down to the general janitors, maintenance staff, who are keeping these healthcare facilities open. But to those who are volunteer and test centers working in food pantries, this is, this is the strength of our country, of our state and our city, and I just truly appreciate. But tonight, I think belongs to one group and one group only. And that group are the seniors throughout the country. Those seniors from, and I'm saying specifically from Waukegan High School, those who are graduating from the, what is it? Is it the sixth grade or the eighth grade going into freshman year? Even down to our fifth graders who are going into middle school. While you are going to experience something nobody else experienced, but you're taking it well, you have, you're taking, you're looking at this on the, on the positive side. And we are so proud of you. And I think I can say that from myself and all the leadership staff here, whether it be staff or aldermen, congratulations to you. We are proud of you. This is just one of many tests that you will have if you move through your life. And I don't know anyone from our leadership staff who's ever gone through this but now experiencing a fifth grade or eighth grade or high school graduation. But you are doing it the best way you know how and with a smile. And we are so, so proud of you with your attitude and how you are just stepping up and just accepting this, this challenge head on. So congratulations to all of our seniors from our high school, our middle school, and those elementary moving up. So, thank you very much. I have one more thing. I was out recently, Alderman, into the public. Some young men and young ladies who had congregated right at the Jewel, Jewel parking lot on Green Bay Road and Grand. And I noticed it was about, about a hundred of them. Their music was blasting and they were out having a good time. And I was a little upset. I won't, I will not fit with you at all. I was upset. I was like, how can they, how can you be doing this when we're in such a crisis? And I, I had to catch myself and say, I probably would have been doing the same thing. They weren't doing, it wasn't being disruptive, wasn't using bad language, wasn't out, they were just out because they were just tired of sitting in the house. I asked them to leave, and this is what I'm proud of them for. They got in their cars and somebody said, oh, that's the mayor. They got in their cars, they left out, no talking back, wasn't disrespectful. I think they were a little, little upset. I was messing up their fun, and to be expected. But I said to myself then, we, we gotta do something when this is over with. We gotta give them something to enjoy themselves with because they're bursting out of the seams trying to do something. And I, I thought about it all night. I gotta say something. I am so proud of how they behaved with me, interrupting their fun. And, you know, if they're listening, if they're not, they're parents, this is why I love being mayor of this city. Our young men and young ladies sometimes do not get what they so richly deserve of being outstanding young men and young ladies and conducting themselves where we want them to. That right there gave me a reason to say, you know what? Thank you for doing that. Now, with that being said, I gotta put up my sign as see behind us. We got, we're saluting our seniors. And I have one more. I'm gonna give a, I'm gonna give a little dig right now. Here's a nice sign, but as everybody know, you got the purple and gold at the top and a green and gold at the bottom. But as David said earlier, that, 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 that purple and gold and green and gold that never dies. But that being said, thank you very much, Alderman. It's great seeing you. And that is mayor's comments for me. Item two, resolutions, proclamation, presentation, there being none. Item three, audience time. And for audience time, we're gonna have Mr. David Motley, who was our director of public relations for the city of Waukegan, to read those. How many do we have, madam clerk?
Four, isn't it?
There's four.
We have a total of four comments who were sent to us via email. And we're gonna read those now. Mr. Motley?
Mute. Test, test. Got it? First one is from Don Quinn. My name is Don Quinn of the Eighth Ward. Mayor and alderman, it is quite disturbing when the aldermen don't think that the repair of sidewalks in our city is an important issue. I'm not saying the homeless situation is not an important issue here as well. They, in my opinion, need equal attention. However, I feel the sidewalks have an importance in some of the older wards simply because some of the older wards usually have more senior citizens that have to travel on those sidewalks. Broken or raised sidewalks pose an immediate danger to someone who uses a walker to get around. And if you use HUD guidelines, they also could pose a trip hazard. I ask you, think of the seniors who depend on sidewalks now more than ever. Just take a walk and enjoy some fresh air. Another thing, if you don't think the sidewalks are being, as being important, alderman, then when the snow falls, quit emphasizing that all the residents need to help keep their sidewalks clear of the snow as they are not an important part of our city. Every year, every alderman talks about the need to clear snow off the sidewalks for the seniors and children who use sidewalks to get around. Yet, when you have federal funds to repair sidewalks, you say they're not important. I am a senior citizen and I keep my sidewalks shoveled each year because I have children who catch the bus at the end of my sidewalk. I do get frustrated when people don't shovel their sidewalks, but now I understand why they don't. It's because you don't care about sidewalks. They are not a high priority for the city of Waukegan. Thank you for listening and I hope you heard my frustration. The second one is from Ms. Rochelle M. Evans. Continuance from last week. Every alderman received a copy of this concern on May 7, 2020. By law, it says that the information requested on a FOIA form are to be fulfilled within five days unless special situations occurred. I understand the seriousness of the COVID-19 and respectfully have patience with this matter. To continue, April 30, thirty-seven days later, Ms. Ruth Ona, the assistant to Ms. Kilkelly, responds and tells me she has received and processed my FOIA to the corresponding department. May 5, I responded to Ms. Ona and my first ward Alderman Bolton that if they could not give me the protocol on the request of the FOIA, that I would submit my concern to Mr. Bob Long, the city's council. Within forty-eight hours, I received an email on today, May 7, by Ms. Ona that stated my FOIA request has been completed. I immediately responded by emailing her a quick thank you, not realizing I did not get the information I requested on the FOIA. Ms. Ona responded via email that the Human Resources does not keep a list of any number of employees that are bilingual as this is a preference and not mandated condition of employment with the city. This FOIA request is closed. Contrary to what the mayor told me, there is someone that speaks Spanish in every department. It is in the job description. I know for a fact that not every department does not have someone that speaks Spanish. Even so, can they read and write Spanish? What is going, what is it going to take to get this information? Can a simple email be sent out to the department ads to get this information? This is not an impossible task, especially seeing that the mayor said it is in the job description of the employers. Please take me seriously. I am not your enemy. I am here to help our community. Ms. Rochelle Evans, owner Flip, Flip Stee Linguist LLC. The third is from Fernando Gomez. Ms. Kilkelly, hope you and your loved ones are safe and healthy. As a resident of Waukegan, practicing Catholic and a person that chooses life over death, I am disgusted and hor, with horrible news about Planned Parenthood Clinic, abortion-killing babies machine that just opened up in our beautiful city. I'm raising my voice to you as a leader in our Fifth Ward as to how this is allowed to happen. Myself and other concerned constituents would like answers on this tragedy that is happening in our city. It is quite contradicting what our mayor, Mr. Cunningham, preaches about staying home to save lives, but at the same time allowing an abortion clinic to open up in the streets of Waukegan. Why, how did all this happen? If they don't have anything to hide, why is it that this killing business was registered under a LLC? This community need answers from our mayor slash local officials. It is a disgrace that we still have Pontius Pilate in our communities. Regards, Fernando. The fourth is from Dylan Burdette. Hello. Over the past two weeks, one worker at the Amazon facility in Waukegan and three workers in the Visual Pack facility in Waukegan have died from COVID-19. On February 18th, Lakefront DSA Chicago Workers Collaborative and Trabajadores Templores, Temporales, I mean, de Wauke, de Lake County, came to the council asking for help in improving the safety of working conditions of local warehouse and factory workers, specifically at Visual Pack. Since the implementation of Waukegan's emergency order and the governor's shelter-in-place order, we know that the workers in our city need protection, especially given the racial disparities we are seeing in infection rates. Our state legislators are refusing to acknowledge this problem in our district, so we need the city's help. Use our law enforcement and code enforcement officers to actively enforce the conditions of both the state and the city's orders in our workplaces and keep us safe. Thank you, Dr. Dylan Burdette, PhD. And that concludes the audience time portion, madam clerk.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Ba, I'm sorry, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Rivera to seat Alderman Turner. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the reason we had to seat Alderman Turner because he was having technical difficulties with logging into the virtual meeting. Good to see you, Alderman Turner. Item four is motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Mozio to approve items four A through K on the consent agenda. Are there any questions in the motion? Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, for, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, for, for number F, being, being a relative, I believe I need to recuse myself from the vote process.
Yeah. Is that, is that, is that okay, Bob?
Yeah, you can, you can recuse yourself specifically from that when the vote happens, Alderman.
What we're gonna do is take out item F. I'm assuming you wanna go ahead and vote for the rest of them, Alderman Rivera?
Absolutely.
So we're gonna, gonna take out item F. So items four A through E and items G through J is on the consent agenda. All right. No other question? No other questions? Roll call, please. Oh, that's right, that's right. I'm sorry. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes from Thursday, May 7, 2020. Motion to approve committee of the whole CDDG meeting minutes from Thursday, May 7, 2020. For C, motion to approve Waukegan Port, this reapportment of Jean Bach. Item four D, motion to approve Plaid and Zoning Commission reapportment of Sarah Griffin. Items four E, motion to approve Plaid and Zoning Commission reapportment of Ted Hogg. Items four G, proclamation, June is Pride Month in Waukegan. Items four H, motion to approve vendor payments in a total amount of seven hundred twenty-two, seventy, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, eighty dollars and forty-seven cents dated May 8, 18, 2020. Item I, motion to approve regular payroll dated, payroll in a total amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and four cents dated May 8, 2020. Item four J, motion to approve payroll for May 8, 2020, including elected officials, six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six, six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. MAP Fiscal Nineteen Retro Pay, two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. PBLC Holiday and MAP Vacation Holiday Buyback, a total amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Final payout, fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents. And SEIU Uniform Allowance, four thousand, fifty dollars and fifty dollars. Items four K, motion to approve fiscal cash out for May 8, 2020, including mayor approved vacation cash out of for twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Sick I AFF SEIU PBLC MAP Sergeant Salary Ordinance, local one fifty-four, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and thirty-three cents. Sick pay MAP Lieutenants for nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Unused Holiday PBLC MAP Lieutenants, MAP Sergeants, Vacation MAP and MAP for sixteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Twenty-four hour Personnel I AFF for seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. And Cop Time SEIU Local One Fifty PW Salary Ordinance for twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Question, ma'am.
Just meant Alderman Taylor has a question.
Alderman Taylor.
It's not really a question. I just wanted to clarify that these were not bonuses that it set for elected officials. These, you know, and others, these were just like stipends that are paid to different organizations like to the elected officials and the buybacks and stuff like that. But there's no bonus check. I wanted to make that clear.
No, no, that's, and it's a good, good point. Unfortunately, that's how it was written in the salary ordinance, so that's how we have to present it.
Yeah, I just don't want the, the public to think that we're giving ourselves bonuses.
No, 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 no. Unfortunately, the language in our salary ordinance clearly states this is how it needs to be on the agenda. When we, when we go back in the salary ordinance, maybe we can clean that language up. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna also be presenting some other things that would clean up a lot of these ordinance, this salary ordinance, the way it was written is probably forty years, fifty years old. So we can do some cleaning up. And we're, we're looking at that right now. But thank you for bringing that to our attention, ma'am.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Unmuted. Alderman Seager.
Go ahead. Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
He's unmuted himself now.
Alderman Turner.
All right. There it is.
My vote is aye.
Thank you. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman, I'm sorry, correction, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Kirkwood to approve the appointment of Raphael Rivera to the Plaid, Waukegan Plaid and Zoning Commission appointment. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager.
Looks like he's muted.
Yeah, there it is. Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
He says aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Abstain.
Motion's passed and carried. Items of five A, of five reported communications. As emergency sweep fiscal 2021, general fund has been completed, finance emergency committee reports, monthly treasure reports for April. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman, treasure swap. Did you have any questions or comments on treasure's report?
Only if somebody else has a question for me.
Okay. Item six. Item six, we'll go to Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item six A, motion to authorize the mayor to execute a month-to-month agreement with Red Speed, Red Speed LLC for the operation of traffic control cameras within the city of Waukegan. In 2011, the city renegotiated a third contract with Red Speed for red light camera enforcement. Due to controversy over some of the red light camera companies involving state officials and other municipalities, the mayor and council office believe it is necessary and prudent to hold off on a long-term contract allowing the General Assembly to determine if they will amend some of the laws regarding red light cameras. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Mozio. Any other questions to the motion?
Mozio.
Mozio, you have a question, Alderman?
I was just seconding the motion, that's all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian. Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that point. I'm glad we're able to evaluate this month to month instead of every three years. Like you said, it gives us a chance to evaluate. So aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Oh.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Item B.
Item B, motion to authorize the mayor to renew a contract with RJ Harris and Associates for a period of one year commencing May 1, 2020, for an annual amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to provide human resource consulting services, including but not limited to Department of Justice Community Relations, recommendations exempt from the competitive bidding process pursuant to section two dash four, five, eight, subsection I for professional services. JR, RJ Harris and Associates works in conjunction with the Chief of Police to ensure that police department personnel have the necessary tools, training and education to provide customer service at the highest levels possible. And this, these funds will come out of the asset forfeiture funds. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second, second by Alderman Mozio. Any other questions to the motion?
No.
Alderman Bolton and Alderman Turner. Alderman Bolton?
Yeah, I understand oftentimes our community is asking about if our police officers and those that provide services are professional and should handle different cases better. And I think this kind of validates the fact we are providing training so that we could be more, better professionals when it comes to our giving services. Am I correct about that?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, different scenarios require a different type of training and ongoing training, particularly in the customer service or just dealing with the public in general. So we believe that Mr. Harris and his team, who's been a part of the with an agreement we had with the Department of Justice, and they've been able to do a great job and have a great working relationship with it.
So that would include also like racial training and things like that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And just different types of, different types of scenario that officers running corner. I think more so would, would certainly would, would, you know, with race being one of them, I think the biggest avenue here I think the biggest avenue here is the mental health, how to deal with those who are coming to you and not knowing, being able to judge. Uh who that person is, how that person is talking, walking. So, you know, just so many elements uh moving parts as relates to this type of training. And uh I noticed that not only our department is doing it, but departments throughout the county, the sheriff's department. Even in the, uh if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Harris is now with the Lake County State's Attorney. When it comes to prosecuting, there's, you know, various uh, we want to call them offenders, but individuals who get who are incarnate with the law. So uh we believe this is beneficial and as, as we all know is cheaper to pay, less expensive to pay on the front end of some issues versus the back end. And we're now looking at liability. What is our exposure? The exposure here is far greater than the upfront dollar sometimes. We have to weigh that, of course. But thank you for bringing that out, Alderman Bolton. Alderman Turner.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious why we are approving a contract that uh a start date is like over two weeks ago and we're just bringing it to the, how we should add this up for approval uh last.
That was just a, the, the, that's when, when the contract ran out, sir. It wasn't. There was really no answer to that, but we'll, we'll monitor those in the future. Thank you for bringing it to my attention, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item C. Motion to authorize the mayor to renew a contract with Blackboard Connect for government services for a period of one year commencing May first twenty twenty for an annual amount not to exceed thirty nine thousand one hundred and fifty seven dollars and thirteen cents for the purpose of mass communication services, services exempt from the competitive bidding process pursuant to section two dash four five eight subsection I, subsection three government joint purchasing. And this um service is for mass calling services throughout the city of Waukegan. When there's boil orders, neighborhood watch meetings and other emergency notifications and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman. Mosio, any other questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I have used this um service to announce my uh ward meetings and different things in the ward and I was really surprised to see what a low um participation rate, if you want to call it, that we get on this. So um I was hoping there would be some way we could, you know, encourage people to participate more. Then even with what's going on right now, I keep hearing people say, well, nobody's communicating and there's, there's no messages. And I mean, at, at one point, I, I think we're less than twenty percent of the calls actually go through. And so um while I, I realize we need something along this line, I was just I don't know, I just want to put it out there that I think we should try to
Yeah, you're absolutely right, ma'am. Um with, there are so many, and again, here's another one, a lot of moving parts to it. I think our consistently, we're, we've been about thirty two, thirty three percent. But we're, we're doing a couple of things right now. We are looking at the telephone numbers that are being used. A lot of them were landlines. So we're really trying to get back into a new list where we can get them into um to your cell phone lines. Uh and a lot of these companies, they were based on landlines and that's where the low participation. But if you take a look at the, if you take a look at the answering machine, you see the answering machine ratio is about seventy five, almost eighty percent. So while we're not individual, uh not actually getting a person, we're making some communication. But we, what, I think what we want to do is get, become more efficient with it and we are talking with them and to talk about what numbers are being used and maybe other methods within this, this communication uh method. Uh we can even go to texting. Some, some, some cities use texting. So it's all about just looking at what they have versus what we need and, 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 and you know, uh finding what's the best solution for us to communicate to our, to our wards. Alderman, Alderman Mosio, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Alderman Mosio.
Yeah, Alderman Florian's point. We have more ways than ever now to communicate. And it's, it, it still does, we still don't communicate. Would thirty nine thousand dollars be better spent? I mean, you have Twitter, you have Facebook, you have, you have Instagram, you have, you know, uh tweet, uh text messaging, you have all these ways to do it. I'm sure there's a service out there that might be more efficient uh than old fashioned landlines or whatever. Would it be more efficient to hire someone? I mean, is, is this company capable of, of doing all that? Or they, I hope they're just not sitting there relying on landlines. Um.
Yeah.
It's gotta be, there, there's, I mean, all these digital formats that communicate with people. Uh and we still can't, I mean, I was just talking to somebody today about the census. We can't get people to fill out the census and we got more ways to communicate. Now, some of them, some of the reason, some of the reasons were really valid. I mean, some people were paranoid uh about the federal government, yada, yada, yada. I get all that. We have more ways than ever to communicate with people and we still can't get it right. And I'm not blaming anybody. You just have to find the right niche and one niche is not the same for every group of people. So I, I don't know. I mean, is this, is this, you know, not efficient money spent? I don't know.
I, 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 I will say that it is Alderman to everybody. We have, we've kind of, from a target standpoint, there is a target group you have to go through. Some are typically are, you know, our seniors use the landline. Uh are that twenty five to forty five, it could be Facebook, it could be Twitter, it could be texting. But one of the things we're going to do with this, with this company is go through the, 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 the list that they have and then make sure that we have the, the numbers that we, we can utilize to communicate and find another method. So if you give us a little time, we can touch base with them to see exactly what's going to be the best method for us to communicate to our uh to all of our, our residents so we can get multiple, the same message to multiple markets. Whether it be that fifty five and older, that twenty five to forty five, that eighteen to twenty five market. So we, and we, we, we believe this company has the, the tools and the technology. We will work with them to find out what would best fits Waukegan, Illinois. Alderman Taylor.
How do we get people's numbers? Do we rely on that information from like when they fill out their sticker forms? Or how do we get people's telephone numbers?
All right. Uh, and that's a little more technical question. Let me bring David up here to, to kind of answer that for us.
And like the other part of that is, is it, how do we get their cell phone numbers? Because those are a little harder to get than landline numbers.
So we uh, we plan on utilizing, uh if possible, through the finance department and water building department. That anyone who's signing up for new uh water service or changing their service, that there will be an automatic opt in uh acknowledgement on these applications. So we're trying to use our technology and also all of our means of reaching out to our citizens when they come to our building for services to automatically enroll them either via text message, email message, or old school landline uh message, uh signed up the way that they want to receive this information.
So that's what we're gonna do in the future. That's what we'll do in the future, not what we're currently doing, no.
That's what uh we will hopefully do.
Okay.
If we re-up with the company.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I understand. We also use uh when they register to vote and provide their information that way is uh also, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
We can do.
That's how you get their, their numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it's, listen, it's gonna be, there's probably gonna be so many different ways for us to update that list. I think step one is to make sure we stay consistent with the company that we have and then start utilizing not only their technology, but some of our technology to put the, the numbers in so we can hit those diverse markets. And it's, it, it's, it, it probably wouldn't take that, probably take about six, seven months to do that, but we'll get it done. Alderman Newsom.
I believe it was several years ago when we first connected with this um uh Blackboard or whatever. We asked residents to give their numbers so that we would be able to call them. But that was before the technology with all the cell phones and, and Twitter and Facebook and all that stuff came online. So people started getting away from their landlines and shutting them down and started using their cell phones. Me being one. So they don't have my number anymore. They have my cell phone. So when the mayor sends out his messages, I don't get them on my cell phone either, cause I don't have a landline. So we have to probably go through the same process that we did when we first started this to get people to give their numbers so that we can reach them in cases of emergency like boil orders and things of that nature.
And David, uh David and Jane are certainly working on that. We'll, we'll be working on that with the company in order to do that. Uh so we, we're gonna have a campaign. We're gonna put a campaign out there and it just won't be for telephones. We're gonna go from texting to emails to landlines. So we, we'll be able to capture all of the markets that we have out there that is, uh I think that fits our community. But uh it's, it's, it's gonna be a process. I will say this. Alderman Turner.
Yeah, thank you. So uh you know, these companies um buy numbers, whether it be cell or landline numbers.
AT&T.
From uh people who collect them. When you go online and you sign for some service, that service may sell your number and that's how they get, get them. But my concern is that uh there's been recent legislation within the last year or so that severely restricts telemarketing, including uh robocalls, excuse me, and that's essentially what you're doing. So um I know that we have a reverse nine one one system for use in emergencies, um which I don't think anyone objects to. And that comes on, I get alerts on my cell phone with that. But um my, my concern is use, what is this gonna be used for? We say mass communication, that just simply notices, hey, it's time to pay your bill or cut your grass. What specifically are we gonna use?
Well, I mean, this, this, what we've, what we've used it for in the past, to announce ward meetings, ob- obviously emergencies, typically boil orders. So this would be for government use only, not from a telemarketing standpoint. So uh our use is for what we needed, what we think is, i- i- is important to get a messaging out. And typically some related to the service that we have or an emergency that's going on or just to reverse nine one one. So it's, you know, that, that, that list is pretty long, but it certainly will be for uh all of government issue um situations.
Right. So then my, uh, thank you, Mayor. And then my other concern is this, the idea of au- automatically putting someone's name on a list and number on a list, not giving them an option, hey, would you like to be alerted? Would you like to be included? Just saying, we're gonna put you on our list and call you up or contact you. And then if you don't like it, uh I guess you have to call us up and, and tell us. Should reconsider the idea of automatically just assuming and taking people's numbers and putting them on a list and then reaching out.
Okay. No problem. Thank you, sir. Roll call please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Oh.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item D, motion to authorize the Public Works Director to execute a change order in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to Waukegan Safe and Lock. Therefore increasing the prior approval granted by City Council on April twenty third, twenty twenty to a total of fifty thousand dollars and further waiving the competitive bidding process. This authority is granted only for services rendered from May first, twenty nineteen through April thirtieth, twenty twenty. The city will use Waukegan Safe and Lock during the fiscal year for small jobs and repairs and expenditures normally not, do not reach the level requiring City Council approval. However, due to unforeseen issues and emergency repairs, spending was exceed, excuse me, spending has exceeded the twenty five thousand limit and retroactive authority is now being requested to close our fiscal year and invoices due to the company and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Mosio. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
Um Alderman Newsom just said that we need to do this for the fiscal year, but this says that this goes all the way through April thirtieth. So that's the fiscal year that just started, right? Or the one that extended?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So can you tell us more about what this was exactly for? I've sent a message to Public Works today and I didn't get an answer from them yet.
Right. Typically what happened, we had different, uh let me give you an example. Uh locks that goes down at the water plant or at the gate or at Public Works or locks throughout the whole city. We, we contract that with Waukegan Safe and Lock. And we, we try to budget as much as we think we should be, but sometimes we'll go over that. So that's simply what this is right here, ma'am. Alderman Rivera.
Um but, but fifty thousand dollars worth?
Yes, sir. You take a look at some of these.
More than that.
It tw- it went over, it went over twenty for the whole year. It went over
Oh, yeah.
Five thousand. So it was only an additional twenty, I believe it was, to end out the fiscal year.
All right, let Bob answer it. I, I, I.
Uh I think they, they were doing fine until right when the COVID hit and then they had to do a bunch of rekeying and um gate access lock security run into place at that time. That's where the majority of the movements. It was a response to the virus and yes.
All of this was in response to the, to the virus?
No, 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 not all of it, but the big chunk at the back end of it was.
I mean, it just, it just seems kind of excessive and I understand that, you know, um, um, you know, it, it is something that has to be done. Obviously, but wow, you know, fifty thousand dollars worth of uh locks.
And if, uh, I also think it might not just, it would be for locks throughout the whole city too. I don't think it's just locks for, even though it's Public Works, it's coming out of Public Works, that's who the vendor is with. But it's, I think it's for locks throughout the whole city, police department.
All departments.
So that's maybe where the expense becomes a little more than we would think it would be. But it, it's not just Public Works. It's all, every lock, you know, throughout the city of Waukegan. He just happens to be the guy with the vendor and the payment. So that's why maybe it seems a little bit, I mean, I was a little shocked too. But I, I, I called and that was the explanation was it's the locks for every department in the city, not just, you know, Public Works.
Well, that, that, yeah, that seems a lot, that seems more reasonable. Thank you, Alderman.
Yeah.
All right. And, and I'm, I'm sorry. I, I just assume everybody knew. Public Works is where the vendor is with, with that department. So whenever these things happen, you will go through the Public Works uh department who physically writes the bill for. But yes, it is for the entire city of Waukegan. I, thank you, Alderman Mosio for clearing that up.
Alderman, um this is my steward at Public Works. Um what happened is too, is we've accumulated from different departments we didn't know. So when we passed it last time, we didn't realize there was a couple of bills from the city hall. Uh I believe the police department, there was rekeying for vehicles and they came in. And it was exceeded even after we exceeded the last time. So this was something that I think we're gonna try to get a better handle on this coming year. And we're gonna set a, a, a limit. And at that point in time, we can't charge anymore until we go forward with some of these vendors.
All right. Can you do, can you do a chargeback, Mike?
Yeah, I wish. No, but while the problem being is, like I say, it's our vendor. And it seems like, let's say, the fire department wants to use it or police and, and sometimes we don't know. So what I think we're gonna do uh to uh uh probably eliminate some of this this coming year is at a certain point with the vendors that I use, I will be notified after like, let's say twenty thousand dollars. And then I'm the only one that can authorize at that point. And I think that should eliminate some of the issues. And I think that should eliminate some of the issues too, all right?
Great, thank you, thank you for the explanation, Mike, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Motion's passed and carry.
Item E, motion to authorize the mayor to issue change order number two, water treatment plant high service pump number five in the amount of fifty one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and change order and change order number three, water treatment plant east bay surface water filters in the amount of two million six hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars to Baxter and Woodman Boiler Construction originally awarded on December eighteenth, twenty eighteen in the amount of four million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which was further modified on December sixteenth, twenty nineteen and January twenty second, twenty nineteen. Should that be twenty twenty or is that twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, twenty nine, it it happened in twenty nineteen, we're just taking action in twenty twenty.
With, okay, with a change order number one of one million eight hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, bringing the new total revised contract amount to eight million seven hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Mozio, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Alderman Taylor.
Who who is it, I didn't?
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Taylor.
Um is there anyone online that can explain how we like doubled the contract with all these change orders and what what it was for? Like it.
Yeah.
What the uh the first change order, which was the uh the to the high speed pump, when we got into the final engineering for trying to figure out what the new, because we've ordered a bunch of new pumps through one of the engineering companies, they found that they needed a backup pump number five that that has been out of service for a while. So that had to be repaired and unfortunately, nobody could figure out what was wrong with it. So they had to literally figure it out as they took the pump apart, saw what was wrong with it, thought it was a switching uh problem and an electrical issue and then managed to put it back together, that's the first change order. The second one is for uh the the second bank of filters, those had not been included in the prior contract with Bowler. We wanted to see how good a job they did when they did the original contract and and put the one bank of filters on. Now that they have demonstrated that it works and it works well, they want to expand it to the second bank, that's the uh main. That's how you end up with such a large number.
Thank you.
And I know Antonio, uh and thanks Bob for it for that, uh and if I'm not mistaken, Antonio is on the line. But our original goal was to get all of the filters ready for operations. At one point in time, I think we're on it, uh half the filters were 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 online and we're working on them. Antonio, do you have anything else to add?
Just um that there were three filters out of service of the first five that they uh re
Yeah.
that they worked on, there was three that weren't working at the time. And so we did five, we want to do the other five to get them all working.
And if, if I can remind you, Alderman, understand what our goal is, our goal is to get to that plant where it is uh producing roughly between twenty, I think we have the capacity, what, twenty five million? Is that Antonio or twenty million, twenty million gallons? Twenty million gallons.
On an average, yeah.
Yeah, so if we can get up, we need to get up to that number. So we then can go back out to the field or to the market and start selling our water.
Um what are we currently at as far as capacity?
I think we were doing ten, what, ten million, ten, eleven millions already, Antonio or Bob, you can answer to either one of them, I know you kinda. Antonio?
Yes, right now it's about, we can do about eighteen million, but with uh all the new filters, we should be at twenty three million.
N- no, but what I'm saying is what is our current capacity, what are we doing right now?
Oh, right now we're only doing about ten million, ten million is the average.
So with that being said, Alderman, we have, we have the capacity to go out and get more customers. And part of our strategy, uh if mostly you can remember when you first came in or while you while you were running for the offices, we said that we wanted to sell water, at least I said, and I know Alderman Greg Mozio and Alderman Newsom, we need to sell this water. We have up to, would be up to twenty three million gallons per day. There's no need for us to sit on that, let's go out to the market, we have a good product with good rates and people are gonna want them. Alderman Turner, I think you need to change, there you go.
Alderman Rivera. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um i- if we're currently at ten million capacity, um we're trying to get to twenty three million, but we're able to hit eighteen million. Um why haven't we been um a- again, out there selling the extra capacity?
Well, Mayor, Mayor, can I ask that?
Go there, Alderman Mozio.
Um it's not as easy as you think. Um you have to get approval for uh the ability to sell it from, the the Lake Michigan has enough water, it does, we've had that in the past. Um getting it to where we want to sell it would be an issue out west. All of this becomes a a negotiation process with anybody that wants to buy it. Uh the price is pretty much set, if I'm right, Bob, it's you can't charge too much, it's pretty much a a a set price uh for you. But all of the infrastructure and a delivery system and and make sure you have enough capacity, all of that becomes a negotiation, it's a lot of working parts in this. Uh the reason I know a little bit of this is because when I was chairman of Public Works, we tried and tried and tried, we, there's a lot of ducks, you gotta get in a row to make it happen. Um and we're, you know, we're trying to do that, we, first of all, you can't sell water from a broke down station, no one's gonna buy water from a broke down station, that's for sure, and then how do you get it to them and all things like that? So um this is something we need to really, really push and try to get done because this is revenue for life. This is revenue for life, but it's not, it's 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 like I said, then you got to go negotiate with that municipality and how, you know, what, what are you gonna, who's gonna pay for the infrastructure? Who's gonna pay for it to get there? Uh all of those things have to be um worked out, so it.
Well, oh, a- and and you know, I and and totally understood. Um but if we have the capacity, it's not that our our place is broken, like you said. Um so so we have the capacity, we just need to work out with another municipality, the infrastructure and who's gonna pay for it and how we're gonna deliver it. But you know, this conversation has been going on for, I don't know, what, ten, fifteen years? Um I mean, at some point in time, we need to kinda, you know, say, okay, this is it, you know, we gotta talk to somebody, we gotta start working on it. Because right now, according to the numbers that were just, you know, thrown out there, we have the capacity, we just don't have the infrastructure to deliver it. And in order to do that, we have to work with another municipality, I understand.
It it, again, all that would depend on which municipality, how many municipalities, um you know, things like that. So yeah, it, do we need to get off our rear ends and get moving on this? Absolutely, but we gotta make sure that our our ducks in a row first. And like I said, I've been trying to, um I've been suggesting this and trying to prod it along forever, but when we first tried to do it, our water plant was in a bad way. The intake, the intake was all jammed up, um for lack of a word, what are, our kidneys, our filters were not what they needed to be. But we're making progress with that, but I agree with you, Alderman Rivera, we need to get on this, because again, this is a revenue stream that is for life.
Well, and it's constant, this is something that, yeah, right now, right now, we see that our um economic status is being disrupted because of what's happening, you know, within our environment, which is the, you know, COVID nineteen. But you know, water is something that that you gotta have. And and it's not that we're gonna, you know, double our prices or anything like that, but if we increase our exposure and our capacity, i- it's it's a definite consistent stream of revenue.
Alderman, Alderman Rivera, unfortunately, you you weren't, haven't been around long enough, but let me tell you what we've been doing over the last three years. We've been talking to three communities already, we've had two or three meetings with them. Uh the challenge that we have right now is you have, they have existing contracts and those contracts don't come up until a certain time. We realize that, so in that, within that time period, what we've been doing is doing exactly what we saying here. Moving that compa- moving that uh that capacity from ten million to twelve million to thirteen million. So now that the word is getting out to the city of Waukegan, who is the oldest, but the largest, the largest water plant on the North Shore, is putting the dollars into their what, into their plant. Unfortunately, in the past, everyone knew we did not put, we did not invest in that into our plant. We're starting to do that now, and again, we started this probably about five years ago, but we're doing other things to get ourselves ready. What's the next step, the next step is putting what, a water tower or a water, not tower, what's the other word, Bob?
Ground station.
A ground station, we must have that, then then we had to work with the lines. It's from from a standpoint of, do we have some lines out there, yes, we do. What communities who who are gonna, who are gonna, who are gonna want our water or who's gonna want water from other sources? One, deliver the capacity, two, at the rate, and we're right in line for both of those. So to your point, we have already started, but the question still remains when those contracts are up with those other ones and I probably our biggest competitor out there, Antonio or Bob, help me out, will be um will be other uh.
Yeah, Old Mill Creek could be one of them, um possibly Gurnee, possibly Antioch, possibly depending on how the, and Monther Harbor, depending on what happens.
Yeah, so we, yeah, but the the our our competitors uh from a standpoint of who who they're buying water from right now and all of those communities are with uh.
Jawa, Jawa.
Yeah, Jawa, Jawa, so in in Jawa, I think, I think Jawa is going to, Jawa's gonna have some in order for us to get to to become just not only competitive, but a reason for them to move over, there's a lot of moving parts here that must be in place. One, the plant, we got that, two, we gotta have some water towers, they gotta be there, one out north, we have one out there Fountain Square and and then another one out west. Those things have to be in place before we start moving. So these are the things that we're working on now, Alderman Mozio.
Real quick, not everybody has Jawa, some people still have well water.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, and that's our, those are, that's our real customers right there.
How do you, how do you, how do you get to Antioch if you're not, if you don't, if you don't?
The lines.
Well, if you don't have, don't have a border with Antioch, you're gonna tell Gurnee, I'm gonna run a water pipe right down the middle of your town? They're gonna say, ah, no, you're not, so that's, those are all the ducks I keep talking about to try to get everything in line is everything is a negotiation, how do you, how do you, how do you get it to the people that need it? Especially people that have well water, how do we get it to them when we have communities in between them that we don't sell water to? So it's a, it's 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 a process, but I I hopefully we can get it going and get something done.
Well, you know what they say, Felix, the biggest door through the house is the garage door, right? So we we gotta just keep knocking on the door, that's all, and we will. I and uh and and I tell you, one thing what really leads to this is people understanding that we have the capacity to get it there. That's the biggest selling tool, the capacity, Alderman Taylor.
Is this covered by water and sewer bonds?
Yes, 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 these are water and sewer bonds. Yeah, and that's how we're gonna do all of this, let's be clear. And we have the the dollars to river, all right. Thank you, everybody, for the spirited conversation with that, and I'm glad we're all on board to move forward with uh improving the, improving the plant, putting the lines down and investing in water towers throughout the city to get us to this point.
Yes, great conversation, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, uh roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Um motion passed.
Motion's passed and carry.
Item F, motion to authorize the mayor to renew a contract with Frank J. Ferlin P E L S for a period of one year commencing May first, twenty twenty for an annual amount not to exceeding, to exceed ninety thousand dollars to provide engineering services exempt from the competitive bidding process pursuant to section two dash four five eight subsection I, subsection four, professional services. And um the budget source for this is fifty percent out of the general fund and fifty percent out of motor fuel tax fund. And I did check to see um if Mr. Ferlin reached this not to exceed amount last year or the ending of this fiscal year and he did not, so um he didn't, he didn't come really, really close to it. So this is just not to exceed amount and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman, Newsom, second by Alderman Mozio, any questions to the motion?
Yes, please, may I?
Alderman Rivera.
Um okay, I I've I've met Frank Ferlin and um and I understand that, uh I mean, he's been with us for a while. Um a a a tremendous, tremendous encyclopedia of knowledge as it relates to our infrastructure and in the um and a- and and some of the the hidden um uh uh or I should, they're they're not treasures, that's for sure, but uh the 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 hidden um bad things that are going on with our city. Um what I'm trying to say is, uh you know, Frank is a tremendous uh resource. Um I I I think that, uh I I mean, obviously, you know, we need, we need him, but um is there a way that we can hire somebody to mentor under him in order to, when it comes to the point where he is getting ready to retire or God forbid, something happens and and he is unfortunately no longer with us? Um if we can st- you know, kinda w- without, without stumbling, continue the process in our engineering department. Because I fear that um i- if we lose this resource, uh we're gonna stumble for a while.
Well, I I let me say this to you, Alderman, the unfortunate part, there was um, there was some decision made to to rid our entire city of an engineering department. Uh and that, uh well, that's, that was a decision then, the decision now. The goal was to start rebuilding that this year, unfortunately, I can't. I'm not gonna even try to attempt that, so uh we have in place uh for one, uh one more year with Frank. And as you can see, there's other IEI infrastructure engineers to ha- to be able to handle a lot of these things that Frank is is teaching us, at the same time, try to build a city of Waukegan engineering program. Let me just say what that's gonna, Frank will be, you're proud of your head, you're gonna need, for a city our size, you should need about three to four civil engineers, a GIS, uh and then a person, a surveyor. We should have roughly about a eight to nine man operation. We don't, we certainly do not have the, we don't have the the financial resources to do that now. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna do what most people do, what uh they try, they try to backfield that with one with cer- certainly having Frank there is it's gonna be, for, that's ninety thousand and the level of service that he brings and knowledge, that's certainly less expensive than anybody else, but at the same time, we we have an engineering company on board with us right now who's helping us along with that until we are able to build that. We're probably about two years away in building up our engineering department. And everyone from Frank to IEI understands that was the long term goal. Unfortunately, uh and today is just not that day.
Well, but and and I and I totally understand, um you know, it's just a- a- again, Mayor, you know, it's a tremendous resource and um
Can't lose it.
Yeah, 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 and if we can't, and if we can't um utilize it, we need to at least uh, you know, be able to have a backup. And I don't think uh uh you know, something may happen and we're gonna be caught.
Well, I think what we're doing right now, well, now that we have Isabel, Isabel was, we started. Well, I think what we're doing right now, now that we have Isabel, Isabel was, we started with Isabel's a GIS. My goal was to bring us a surveyor in, along with Frank, and then be looking for that long-term person to handle or to start building that, that engineering department. It just wasn't this year, but we are, we have started taking some of the information, not only that he has, that is in our archives, and put it in our system. So we do have that. We're building up, we're building up the GIS system. So we'll know where this main broke or where this main is at, and IEI is gonna help us through that process. It's probably gonna take three to four years for us to get to where we wanna be, but we certainly have. Well, I mean, whether, whether Frank is here and Frank is, decides to permanently retire or not, we are building on that, and that's the most important thing for us right now.
Um, just a question, how long has Frank been retired and, and?
Well, Frank, I, I don't know how long, I don't know when Frank originally retired now, but I know for how long as Frank has been around. I, you know, I would, I sat on, on, in the chair for eighteen. He was all eighteen years there.
Well, yeah, and the, the only point that I'm trying to make is, a- again, i- if he retired ten years ago and we started this plan ten years ago, we're not, you know, we need to move around, you know, move forward quickly with something like this before the opportunity is gone. That's all I'm saying. But, and I appreciate, and I appreciate, you know, the explanation, Mayor. I sincerely do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alderman Newsom?
I just wanted to say, Mayor, that Frank works closely with Mr. Hewitt out there at Public Works. So I'm sure that they are claiming a lot from him and getting as much information as they can. As the mayor said, with our GIS staff, they, they're getting and documenting as much information as, as we can from Mr. Furlan when he's there, you know, part-time he comes in. But I'm sure he's, he's, like you said, he's an excellent resource and he knows where everything is buried and when it was buried. So.
I just don't want to kick it either.
Right. I, I agree that we have to make sure that he passes along as much of that knowledge as he can to those that are in the Public Works Department now.
Yes. Absolutely right on that one. And hopefully those who come in don't get that information, then leave us to somebody else. Now, we've had that happen before, I will say that. I think we had two of those that leave. All right. With that being said, roll call, please. Thank you, Alderman Rivera.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager. Alderman Moseo. Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera. Motion passed.
Motion's passed. And Carrie?
Item G, motion to authorize the mayor to renew a contract with Infrastructure Engineering, Inc. For a period of one year commencing July first, twenty twenty, for an annual amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars to serve as the city's municipal engineer exempt from the competitive bidding process pursuant to section two dash four five eight subsection I, subsection four, professional services. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman. Newsom second by Alderman. Moseo, any other questions?
I have a question. Was, did we ask him to lower his rate?
Yes, ma'am. We, we did. It was significantly higher than, not significant, but it was higher than that. So we, we, we still speak with them. Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Taylor, go ahead.
Alderman Taylor.
If this is a municipal engineer, why was this not bid out? Um, because, I mean, it's not like a unique engineering position. Um, could we, or should we have bid this out?
Ma'am, this is our, this is our city engineer. City, with, they, their firm brings everything that we need for an engineering company. So they're replacing an engineering department for our community. Uh, IEI has been with us for the last two years. They know our operations, working with Frank. I mean, we're, that's, that's why, ma'am. All the, who's, there was another Alderman, Alderman Moseo?
Yeah, I mean, there's a same, they're, they're, they're both G and H, correct? Same company?
Yes.
And we're gonna pay him over a million dollars. I mean, I'm with you, Mayor. We gotta get to an engineering department. That's a lot of money to pay a firm. I get it. I don't know what we're, I mean, I don't know what we're getting. I'm not, I'll be honest with you, I've not been very happy if they've been in charge of the road program at all. Uh, not that I'm not getting roads done in my ward, but I get, they'll do a block and then the, right next to it, the block's just as bad and it's not done. I don't know who is in charge of deciding what roads are done and what roads are not done, but I am not very pleased with, uh, the roads that have been done and haven't been done. Um, if these guys are overseeing that, I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not getting my money's worth for that.
Well, Alderman, let's take a look at now. We remember, we went out and we got an assessment done, correct? We all remember that. That assessment determined what roads needed to be done from good, medium to bad. We're going from that assessment. Their job is to manage that assessment. So while we have changed, we, I'm sorry, not changed, we're only going by what the assessment tells us. Now, if we wanna move into that, that direction, then we need to start, we're gonna have to put a lot more money into the road program. We've been averaging about seven million, eight million dollars. This year, we're down to five million. We were, we were trying to get to about, I think we were trying to get to seven million, but we, we held back a million. So everything that we're doing is based on what the assessment and the grades of the road. Sometimes with those, we decided to do roads that might need to go underneath that have bad water lines and bad sewer lines or bad mains. There's no need to do on all of those and then, and then coming back, having to break up the road. So I, I think what we wanna do is find out what the strategy is of the program that we have out there, and that's the reason we're doing it. Now, what, I think someone said we're paying one point eight million. Let's say we had a, an engineering department to run this road program at the dollar amount that we had, that would take our entire engineering department to do that. So we would've went back out anyway. Ladies and gentlemen, I understand the frustration of these contracts when it comes to engineering. But understand, we were doing a lot of this without an engineering and finding a lot of, you know, things we probably could have done better. We must have engineering do these things and do them right. And, and, and that's just, th- this is the cost of it. So while I hear your frustration about a block over here, no one could be more frustrated than me.
And, and I get it, Mayor, and the whole pothole, pothole issue, and I get that. Um, and I know we had our roads assessed, but that assessment could change depending on winter and weather and things of that sort and all that. So it may probably needs to be revisited every year, uh, because one road could've went from, from a B to an F pretty quickly. Um, so I'm, I'm just saying, I, I'm gonna be watching. That's all. I'm, I'm gonna watch a little closer.
That's, that's no problem. So am I. Alderman Kirkwood.
Well, my concern is that I've talked with Mark, the engineer, and certainly when I had questions regarding the road program or the sidewalk, he certainly came out with me in the fourth ward and gave me a better understanding of what needs to be done. Uh, certainly, uh, in parts of my ward, you know, there were some sidewalk issues that need to be backfilled because of the rain that we're having and driveways that were not accessible to the homes. And they took care of that. Uh, I think that we gotta be patient and work with the engineers that we have because I believe that eventually we also need to have our own department. But cost-wise and where we are financially, we cannot afford that right now. And we need to be financially prudent in everything that we do right now. And I think that is steady because certainly in the fourth ward, as in other wards, we got pothole concerns. We got flooding in the fourth ward, uh, from the rain and, and, and the small sewer systems that we have. So I think that we gotta be patient, uh, we gotta work with the people and communicate. And certainly, uh, Mark has communicated with me in terms of what's gonna happen in the, the fourth ward. And also, uh, Alderman Seager and I are working together because we share some of the same streets, uh, in, in fourth ward. So we just need to continue to work through this and certainly be observant of what's going on. Uh, one of my concerns is I did talk with Mark in terms of making sure that our residents are aware that their sidewalks are gonna be torn up, uh, and not, uh, put signs out so they are aware of that because that did occur, but it was corrected. So I, I wanna make sure we working with, uh, the people that we have hired and, uh, and be patient as we go through this process.
I, I, and I wanna, I wanna, I wanna reiterate, Alderman, that investing in Waukegan, it appears like is on the top of everybody's list. We need to understand that this year, I think would be the last year of the bond money. I want to go back out for more bonds when it comes to improving and investing in our community. And that's not gonna, it's not, we're talking fifty million, maybe sixty million dollars for a program that's gonna stretch out over five years. This year, we're gonna re-up the CIP program, the Capital Improvement Program. So we're gonna now go back to that list of that infra, uh, uh, of that infrastructure. With five hundred and fifty-four million dollars, we gotta go back and take a look at that, put a five-year program together and then identify the funding for that. And what I'm hearing today from all of you is that we want to invest in Waukegan, and that's just the bottom line. So I, I say to all of you now, it's time to get ready to put our, you know, you know, to put our money where our mouth is. We have to do this, folks. I know your roads are bad. And it's no, there's, it, it has nothing to do with another, it is what it is. Now we need to manage to what it is to move on. But thank you for your confidence in that. Alderman Newsom?
I just wanted to echo what Alderman Kirkwood has stated. I also have reached out to Mr. Kozlowski, the engineer, and have made him aware of some of my concerns last year and this year, uh, even with the, uh, as Alderman Moseo mentioned, uh, one block being done and the other not being done. So once I reached out to him and let him know what my concerns were and what I was looking at and compiling a list to present to him that I, you know, that I'm looking at, and he can get back to me and let me know if there's infrastructure concerns, whether mains are a problem or something needs to be done underground, then I can understand why this road is not being done, even though the surface is, is unacceptable. So, uh, he's there for you to reach out to him and he'll, uh, he'll, he'll reach out to you and make sure that you, uh, your questions are answered.
And, and thank you, Alderman. I'm gonna say this to everybody else, too. Mike Hewitt and myself have, have talked to Chris Garland, who everyone know that's our foreman, asphalt foreman. One of the things we've implemented to the road program, we've implemented to the road program, Alderman Florian. If you can remember on Verco, is that, is that Verco? Verco Road over there, right off Macquarie? Well, the city of Waukegan has bought this machine where we can go and do some grinding where, you know, maybe three quarters of the road is good, but a, but a, maybe a quarter of a block is what we call alligator-y. It means it's chopped up in little pots. Well, the city of Waukegan can come through and handle that. I'm just, give me what Mike Hewitt told me what it, what it was, y'all. Well, we can go through and we can do some of those things, and we've incorporated that into the road program. And what does that do? That can buy us another year, another two years. Or if there is, Alderman Newsom, to your point, where the, the main is a much bigger problem, which requires much bigger investment, but we still wanna smooth out the road, we can do that. That came from IEI, they came from Public Works, and understanding that, well, we can't do every road, but we can do this to get us by something. So that's, those are things we're gonna be doing, too. And if you see those things in your area, write that down. Give it to Mark or give it to myself. We'll go from there. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager. Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera. Motion passed.
Motion's passed. And Carrie?
Item H, motion to authorize the mayor to renew a contract with Infrastructure Engineering, Inc. For a period of one year commencing July first, twenty twenty, for a fee of nine percent of project cost, estimated to be one point eight, eighty-three thousand nine hundred dollars to serve as the city's Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, project manager, exempt from the competitive bidding process pursuant to section two dash four five eight, subsection I, subsection four, professional services. And I so move. And I will say that, uh, they are, if it's my understanding, it's gonna be paid out of the capital improvement funds, water and sewer funds, and also they are paid nine percent of the projects that they complete. Is that correct?
Yes. Motion by Alderman Newsom second by Alderman Moseo. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
You have one.
I'm sorry. Alderman Turner.
Hey, I'm just out of curiosity. I see, you know, we see a lot of these, uh, contracts that are awarded, uh, exempt from competitive bidding process and so forth. So I'm just, just, I mean, it just dawned on me while you were speaking. How is that selection made if we don't bid? How, how do they become aware of, how do we, any of these vendors? There's no bid process and you, how, how's that, how's that process work?
Well, again, these are professional services. So, and these services that we certainly, what we certainly need. And then we have, you know, they've been with us for a while, as, as Frank or, or Waukegan's safe and lock. When we have something that we are used to them, they know us, they know our city. That's one of the reasons we keep on the professional services, why we stay with, we try to stay with that. And, and sometimes, well, that, that service might not be what we need. We, then we go out. But for right now, uh, this is where we're at from, from operating our city.
Okay.
And I, I, listen, I, I understand.
And it makes perfect sense. I mean, if we have a existing history and we're comfortable with them, a relationship, know their work and so forth, too. It makes good sense. I, I was just curious how that, uh, works. So thank you.
Uh, roll call, please. I'm sorry, Alderman.
Mayor, and I, I just wanted to reiterate that I wouldn't have wanted to start with them last year and they come to know what's happening in my ward and not be awarded the project to complete what they've started. So, um, I, I, I'm in agreement with staying with them for now.
And I will say this, Alderman, all of you, there're gonna be a lot of sidewalks tore up, a lot, a lot of curbs tore up over the next four or five, probably four or five months up until October, November, till it gets cold. So, uh, we're gonna try to get those notifications out, but these guys are moving rather, rather fast. Alderman Bolton?
Yeah, I, I'm just speaking to someone about this. I understand he's volunteering some of his services. We're not really paying him what he deserved. Can you elaborate on that if I'm correct?
Are you asking me?
Yes, Mark.
Whoever can answer it.
Could you please repeat the question?
I understand that this engineer is volunteering some, a lot of their services and they're not really getting paid what they really deserve.
Oh, um, we're getting paid what we deserve for the services that were provided, but we are, I mean, every, every professional service is gonna have some level of additional work.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I'm trying to say, I understand you, we're, it's a cheaper rate, this engineer.
Oh, definitely. We're looking at, you're looking at probably twenty percent or, uh, excuse me, twenty percent of the construction cost rather than nine percent, if you went a different route.
On the open market for managing, for projects, is what we're saying. So. But, yeah, I, listen, we have, we're going to, let me, let me go back to what, I'm gonna talk about our engineers. The, I, I understand that I wanna build an engineering department. They understand that. Really believe that we're gonna be moving forward this year. But as it states right now, with a lot of the projects we have going on, particularly from the CIP and helping out with the, even with the, uh, with the water plant, there's just, it's a lot of moving parts. So, you know, over the next couple of years, this is where we're gonna be at. With, with the, with the understanding that we're retaining a lot of this information, putting it in a, on a file somewhere so we can then. putting it in a, on a file somewhere so we can then go back and see it if we needed to. And I tell you, 14th Street was probably the best example of where we got caught up at. And, and it was Frank and Felly McKnight who caught that, that was not on the, it wasn't on the maps. And it's, and it's going to be a lot of that in our community. I'll give you another example. Right here at Washington Street in front of 415, there was a vault inside that I didn't know about, no vault, and I don't think very few people did. But there's few people around this community who knows these things. The Campanellas, the Peter Bakers. Why we say, why do they always get them? Because they're the only ones who know.
Where the bodies are buried.
Where the bodies are buried, and it is what it is, guys. We just manage our way out of this as best as we can and try to re, try to become more efficient by writing it down or not putting it in our system, put it on the map. And that's what they're going to be charged with over the next two to three years. And it's, it's, it may sound heartbreaking when we hear these numbers, but I assure you this, let a mistake come in and see what happens. Roll call, please.
Oh.
You said mayor.
I, I said mayor.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that it's our job to manage the Capital Improvement Program, has been for two years. And our job is to manage the budget and the work that's proposed for short-term and long-term. And that's what we're doing in place right now.
Thank you, Mark. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass, carry.
Item I, motion to authorize the mayor submit an application to the Lake County Council of Mayors Surface Transportation Program Grant Program for federal participation relative to engineering and reconstruction of Washington Street for a total project value of 12,830,000. If awarded, this grant will provide 7,500,000 in federal reimbursements and has a local match requirement of 5,330,000 over a three-phase timeline. The grant agreement will need to return to council for authorization prior to the program moving forward. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo, any questions to the motion? Alderman Kirkwood.
Mayor, for this particular road project, you know, that's going to start from Green Bay all the way to West Street where we've completed the Culversack area there.
Axius going the way, all the way to Sheridan Road.
Alderman, the, this is Mark, the, the, the project is proposed from Green Bay to Sheridan Road. As a, at this point is planning, we know that the, from West Street East has been improved already. Actually, from Park East has been improved, but we want to look at the whole alignment as a one project.
Okay.
That would be, the grant, the grant would be from Green Bay to Sheridan.
Okay. And so are, are we also going to be looking at the lighting down Washington as a part of that? We're going to do the sidewalk curbing all at the same time?
The, the project would include lighting, pedestrian improvements, accessibility improvements, improvements to signalized and non-signalized intersections, roadway alignments. You know, the McCrory bike path goes through there. I think we've seen some of the slides in the presentation that was attached. Those are the kinds of things that were, that are proposed for improvements like this for two and a half miles.
Thank you.
And, and I stress enough, guys, everybody, from Green Bay to Sheridan Road, I don't know in my lifetime if I've ever seen a project such as this. And, and it's going to potentially reconfigure the entire Washington Street from Green Bay Road all the way through. These are the projects we need to get into. These are the things that we need to do from Green Bay and 120, Green Bay and 132 Grand going east. But look at the cost. The, these are real live numbers with, with very smart people managing this.
And I should add that this, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I should add that this is a probably 20 to 25 million dollar project that you're looking at with an investment from the city of, I, a fraction of that.
So, you know, being a part of the Lake County, the Lake County Council of Mayors, which every mayor in the county get a part of, but guess who's the biggest city? We are. And we haven't been at the table. Other communities have taken advantage of this Lake County Council of Mayors grant. These are dollars that get our numbers. They get the city of Waukegan numbers to incorporate in to make sure these dollars come. All I'm telling you right now, these are the projects that we should be wanting to be in. Alderman Taylor.
Been a long time ago.
Um, so would this money, if it comes back to council, we came back to council?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, potentially it could be that. It could be something we just budgeted for. And, 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 and I, I, I just, and I'm stressing this because these are the projects that we deserve, folks. We deserve this project. All of your hard work of talking and, and being out there, this is, these are the projects we want to do. The next one, we're going to the state of Illinois. From one, from Green Bay Road at 120 coming into our community, our roles need to be done. That's just period, whether we help pay for it or not. But when we put ourselves in position that Washington Street gets done, and we go, go to IDOT and says, hey, look, look what Lake County mayors is doing. Look at the investment that we're doing. We need for you to start doing the same thing. So, you know, I, we got to be on the horn. We have to be in play for this. And if this comes through for us, this is a huge win for not just Waukegan. I'm telling you, this is a huge win for Lake County. I, I'm on a soapbox here, but I, I'm just proud of the fact that we, we identified this. We're trying to put in for this grant, and we got to cross our fingers. You, you can't win unless you're in the game, right, Greg? All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
All right. Motion pass and carry.
Item J, motion to authorize the mayor to execute an Illinois Department of Transportation IDOT Local Public Agency Agreement for federal participation relative to Phase One Engineering for the Greenwood Avenue Bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad improvements for a total project value of 219,000. This grant will provide 175,200 dollars in federal reimbursements and has a local match requirement of 43,800 dollars, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo, any questions? Alderman Turner, then Alderman Taylor.
So this is just permission to apply for the grant, correct?
Uh, no, this is not a permission. This is the local agency agreement with IDOT to proceed with the Phase One planning for the bridge rehabilitation or replacement.
So have we already gotten the grant, then?
Aye.
No. And before you, before you do anything with IDOT, with IDOT with total authority, your, your Phase One engineering must be completed. That's with all the grants that you participate with them. But there's a local participation match of 175 that comes from the federal government because of the, because of the bridges. Most of your bridges have that, right, Mark?
The, the bridges, this program is locally funded Phase One, and then that 20%, and then the 80% is covered by the Federals.
So we know we're getting that money, is what I mean?
Yes.
That is, that's applied for, yep.
The 175 we're talking about, ma'am, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I should also mention that the consultant that is working on the project has also engaged with IDOT for the project form. They've been working with Lake County and IDOT already to sort of ignite this moving forward.
Now, is there a chance that we could lose some of these IDOT grants with the state budget being what it is right now? Are any of those in jeopardy? Or is this already a done deal? We've got the money?
That's a great question, and I would refer to the consultant on that, Baxter and Woodman. However, IDOT is aware of the project. They're moving forward. And the bridge is in a condition that we would need to do it no matter what.
Yeah, typically.
And it's a, it's a, sorry.
No. But Alderman, to answer that question, I think this has been budgeted, so it's a part of their, their 2020 budget year. So it's been budgeted.
Actually, on the bridges, mayor.
Yes.
What they do is, when it comes to bridges, there's, there's already funding out there for these. The only thing is you have to apply for it. You have to go into Phase One. So nobody, we're not going to get refused on this money, so we will get it. And we will go to Phase One, just like we did Phase One for Belvidere Bridge. I think we also did Phase One for Genesee. And then, but once you get through Phase One, then it's Phase Two. But all the way through the project, we only pay 20%, and the state pays 80. State and federal government is 80%.
Mayor, would you, mayor, this is Tina. Mayor, would you like me to address how the grant funding works, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So these are actually federal grants. They are not state grants. They're administered by the Illinois Department of Transportation. And this is actually the grant agreement, or this is the local agency participation agreement for Phase One. Like all, all DOT grants, you have to continue completing a phase and moving to the second and third phase. There is always a chance that federal funding would not be available at that time. You know, we don't know the future. It's doubtful, but that could happen. However, with this grant, similar to the Washington Street grant that you voted on earlier, if the local agency, the local government does not move forward, however, with Phase Two and Three, you do have to pay back any federal funding you received to date, and we had that happen recently.
I saw another hand. Was that Alderman Florian? Was that you, ma'am? Okay. Oh, that was Janet. Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass, carry.
Item K, motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Baxter, Baxter and Woodman, selected based on a request for proposal process in amount not to exceed 219,000 to provide Phase One engineering services relative to the Greenwood Avenue Bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad improvement pursuant to Illinois Department of Transportation IDOT Local Public Agency Agreement. And it's coming out of the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass and carry.
Item L, motion to authorize the mayor to execute a Department of Justice DOJ Bulletproof Vest Partnership Agreement relative to public safety equipment for a total project value of 46,006 dollars. This grant will provide 23,300 in federal reimbursements and has a local match requirement of 23,300. And this is going to come out of the Asset Forfeiture Fund. And the Bulletproof Vest Partnership, BVP, grant is designed to cover 50% of the cost of the purchase of new or replacement bulletproof vests for police officers of the City of Waukegan Police Department. The remaining 50% cost will be paid through the Asset Forfeiture Funds. The lifespan of a bulletproof vest is five years. Officers are only eligible to receive a new vest through the BVP grant every five years. The grant award totals 23,300. And like I said, 50% that fund is coming from the Asset Forfeiture Fund, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo, any other questions to the motion? Alderman Florian, then Alderman Turner. Alderman Florian.
Um, I don't really have a question. I just want to make a comment that I love seeing something like this come out of the Asset Forfeiture Fund. I think it's great that the money that gets taken from bad guys gets used in a good way. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Turner.
I can't hear him.
I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got the telephone here and had it on you. So anyway, thank you for, yeah. Yeah, I seem to recall that when we passed the, the new contract for the new body cameras and interview room cameras and, and in-car cameras and all of that, I, I thought there was an element, a line item or reference to body armor in that contract, too. Is that right? Maybe the chief can answer.
I know chief is online. Chief, can you answer that question for us, please?
I can't. Thank you, Alderman. No, in that Exxon agreement, there is no, nothing for body armor in that, sir. I think it has body worn camera, vehicle cameras, interview room cameras, and actual tasers. All right. I miss red. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass and carry.
Item M, motion to authorize the mayor to execute an Illinois Department of Human Services Tobacco Enforcement Program, TEP Grant Agreement relative to public safety programs for a total project value of 8,100 dollars. This grant will provide 8,100 dollars in state reimbursement and has a local match requirement of zero. The goal of the Tobacco Enforcement Program Grant is to develop strategies to reduce, to reduce the illegal sale of tobacco products to minors. The program annually awards 1 million dollars in grants to communities that are willing to implement its tobacco enforcement program. Participating communities are required to provide retail education to its retailers prior to implementing the enforcement component. All tobacco retailers will receive the Tobacco Retailer Kit, which includes a review of state minimum age tobacco laws, required signage and training guides for their personnel. In addition, each tobacco retailer will receive three compliance checks. Tobacco retailers within the entire program currently average over 80% compliance, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo, any questions to the motion?
I also wanted to reiterate, too, that this also includes vaping products will be added to this grant as well. And I so move.
And motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass and carry.
Item N, motion to authorize the mayor- Item N, motion to authorize the mayor to execute any and all necessary documents in order to be reimbursed up to $21,078.84 in eligible funds from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Assistance to Firefighters AFG COVID-19 Supplement Grant. And $21,078.84 for recapturing funds spent on this, on and buying new PPE and cleaning supplies. This is a federal grant which bases its cost share formula on population. Due to the size of our city, the city's share of funding would be 10% of the project cost. This award is different in that part of it is retroactive. If awarded, we only can, we only cannot recoup 10% of what we have already spent. Therefore, the federal award would be $18,970.96. City funds not reimbursed would be $2,107.88, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Mozio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsome.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. And Carrie?
Item O, motion to authorize the mayor to execute any and all necessary documents in order to be reimbursed for eligible overtime costs from, from the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, IEMA, for providing a standby ambulance and crew at the COVID-19 testing site. COVID testing, 19 testing site. The fire department will be staffing an ambulance and two men crew to stand by daily at the COVID-19 test site on Northwestern Avenue. Times will be from eight to five, or when all test kits are exhausted. IEMA will reimburse the city for overtime, backfield costs for personnel assigned to this deployment at 100%, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Mozio. Any questions to the motion?
Well, why do I need an ambulance on standby? We already got a five right there, but.
It was part of the requirement. It was part of the requirement when we all do negotiations, they must have one. In the event that someone gets sick, right there, they have emergency service. So we have, we were able to do ours for a couple of weeks, and then I think we're going to contract, they're going to be contracting the rest of it out. It was necessary and well worth it. All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsome.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Motion passed.
All right. Well, congratulations, everybody. Y'all did it the old school way. On the agenda. So we made it through. And again, everybody, Alderman truly appreciate your support as we move forward. And a lot of our infrastructure things is going on in our city, but I hear you loud and clear. The marching orders are in for us to do what? To invest, invest in Waukegan in an efficient and effective way. But I do appreciate all your support. All right. Item seven, there being none. Item eight, there being none. Item nine, closing items. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wanted to mention, I'm so happy that with everything going on with the pandemic and all the issues in our area and throughout the whole country, that I'm, I'm very grateful that our police department and our fire department and our public works and code enforcement that are out there every day have, have so far been relatively unscathed and, and we haven't lost anyone yet, and that, that's really a good thing. I, I want to encourage everyone to keep wearing their masks and do everything they can to keep this virus from, from continuing to spread. I did go to the test site on Thursday and get tested. It's painless. It's quick. I was in and out of there in 10 minutes. They phoned me with my results on Saturday. I, I'm gratefully negative because I've continued working this whole time. So I, I want to encourage anyone who is, you know, willing to do it to go get tested. We need to bring the number of positive cases down, so the more negatives we get, the better off we're going to be. So it's, it's very painless, and, and they're all very professional. It's a very easy process to go through. So I want to encourage people to take advantage of that while, while we can. They're now doing 750 tests a day, so and there, there aren't as many lines. I pass by there every morning on my way to work, and at first the lines were very long, but now they're really down to a manageable level. This weekend, there was some unprecedented flooding. Two, two out of three days, we got huge rains, and I want to thank Public Works for trying to get out and address some of this. I've still got a really bad area here out by me with some flooding that's occurring from Bur Oak and Cashmore Road onto the golf course, and so we've still got some issues. We have a beaver that built a dam, and so there's all kinds of drama with this. But they set some traps out today, so hopefully we can catch the beaver, get rid of the dam, get the water flowing again. So I appreciate the help that Mike and his crew have given me on that. I also want to take a chance, my opportunity to congratulate the seniors, the eighth graders. It is really sad to me that they aren't going to be able to participate in the normal commencement ceremonies and things, prom, signing your yearbook, all those things that we all just take for granted every year. And I, I commend you for taking it with a grain of salt, and hopefully there can be some kind of alternative. I know there've been some drive bys, some teachers putting out signs, those kinds of things, so again, I, I just acknowledge that this is a trying time for all of you. I want to address Mr. Quinn, who happens to live right across the street from me, talk about the sidewalk issue. And I really think I speak for all of us when I say we all care about sidewalks, and we all want safe sidewalks. We all want the sidewalks to look decent and be walkable. There's two people walking by right now in front of my house. So the money that we reallocated was money that hadn't been spent last year, and I believe I'm correct when I say this, Mayor. It had to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. So we needed to reallocate money to address this COVID pandem, COVID pandemic, and so we, we are not ignoring sidewalks. We're not making them, you know, low on the priority list. It was just a, a kind of a shuffling of money, but I know I will continue to fight to get sidewalks replaced in my ward, as probably all of us will. And one last thing I want to talk about is our committees. I know that this is unprecedented times doing Zoom council meetings, and I think we've all done pretty well, considering we're all 15 and above. I think we've done a great job. But the concern I have is our committee meetings are the only time residents have a chance to ask a question and get an answer. And so if we're going to continue meeting on, on Zoom, I'd like to try to figure out a way where residents can have more input than, than is happening. You know, today, we went through the whole finance committee agenda, and we did a great job. I agree. But I just think we need to figure out a way to get more input from the residents whenever possible. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I want to wish all the Waukegan seniors a happy graduation, and whether you're a Waukegan Bulldog, a Warren Blue Devil, or Libertyville Wildcat, you're still Waukegan, and I'm proud of you, and I, I just want to say how much you know, this year may have been different, but I know, I just absolutely know you'll do well, and you'll show us a different world as we go forward. To the college graduates who are concerned about jobs, please just step back a little bit, give this time, things will get better, I promise you. But enjoy this time as a new graduate. I also want to thank the mayor today, who has told me that I can get PPE, so I can distribute to some of my seniors and to some of my snowbirds who are just coming back to the ninth ward. So I greatly appreciate that, Mayor, and hopefully I can get that soon. I just want to also talk a little bit about this is the time, as I'm starting to drive around the ward and see some of you are being really, really good about cutting that grass, and some of you are not, and I know this damp weather has made it really tough. But as we go forward, please, please, do the grass cutting. We need it. We need the city to look good and take this opportunity while you're home to clean up the yard a little bit. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I too want to echo that. Congratulations to all our graduates, and I just want to encourage you to dare to continue to achieve. Also, I want to make you aware that collaboration about nine to 11 churches is working with the community church called Christian Neighborhood, and they volunteered this week with them, and they have overabundance of food. So they, if you know anyone that needs food boxes, please call Pastor Luke at 847-512-4900. That number again is 847-512-4900. Also want to acknowledge audience comments from Mrs. Evans. I look forward to maybe just trying to work with her and and assist her to explore how she wants to give back to our community. And I understand she really wants to contribute to enhancing the ability for writing and speaking and reading when it comes to Spanish. So I just want to acknowledge her on that. And then I want to encourage everyone, don't forget to fill out the census. Once again, as you look on my Facebook page, it indicates it saves us billions of dollars. So I want to encourage you to do that. And also, lastly, want to thank our first responders and those that contribute to and serve in our social services community. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
I'd just like to thank everyone for cooperating with our, all of, all of people involved, first responders, fire department, paramedics, everybody, police department. Thank you so much. And just try to keep a positive attitude. Let's move forward and get this town back rolling. Thank you. Rocketing and rolling.
Alderman Mozio.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate, Alderman Bolton. Talked to a former student of mine. She's involved in the census and people, we just got to get the word out to do the census, do the census, do the census. I'm sure most people that are watching city council meetings have probably done it, because those are just the way what those type of people do. We have to try to get to the people that have not. We're only like 25%, I think. We got to do better than that. So however, we can communicate that to somebody and get to them. We have to try census, census, and I she, she mentioned to me part of it, people are afraid of the federal government. I mean, I get it. I understand that, but we have to try to tell them that's, that's not a fear. That shouldn't be a fear, and we need to do that. Another thing, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and we need to pull the trigger on it. It's, it's time for this city to get to nonpartisan elections. We don't need any Republican or Democratic parties in Waukegan. We're, 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 the city of Chicago is nonpartisan. My God, why can't we be? I mean, my goodness, we don't need to have partisan parties in the city of Waukegan, in my opinion, anymore. Now, probably can't do that in the next mayoral election, but definitely for the next aldermanic election. I don't see any reason why we couldn't move forward on something like that. I'm not going to bother Bob Long with that question, and I, me and him can talk at a different time on how to make that happen. But I, I just think it's, it's time for that to go away. There's no reason for it anymore. My, me and Alderman Newsome, I've always run as a Democrat, and she's always run as a Republican, but I don't know that either one of us have ever voted in party lines on anything. And we've been up here for, what, 17 years, Alderman, or something like that, whatever it is. So it's, it's, to me, it's just silliness. It just needs to go away. So I, I think we need to think about that, and if there's a way the council can do it quickly and effectively, then we need to do it and go ahead about that. And again, to all the graduates, especially mine, I've already reached out to so many of them already and talked to them, so I'm not going to belabor that point anymore, but they know how I feel. We've talked, so with that, everybody else, stay safe and have a good night.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and all the department heads for their leadership during this pan epidemic. Everyone's doing a great job, and certainly my colleagues are doing a great job answering the concerns of our constituents. As many of you, we've had flooding in the fourth ward area, certainly on Judge Allenwood Buttrick and on Brookside. Certainly, the Public Works Department is addressing those particular areas, and we're going to have additional rain throughout the week. So we want to continue to be patient. I'll answer as many calls as I can. I'll continue to answer those throughout the night and tomorrow. Also, for those individuals that still have brush on the parkway, if you would call the Public Works Department at 847-360-0944, they'll pick that up. I've driven around and took them down the addresses, and I'll give those to Mr. Hewitt, but you can also call at 847-360-0944. Also, I want us to think about if we're going to continue to have these kinds of meetings. I like to get to the point where we can have some ward meetings, whether we use Zoom, Global Meet, Facebook Live. Like to get some assistance from our technology department on how we can go about doing that so that we can talk with our residents, because it's good to be able to meet with them, whether we're doing it in this fashion or some other fashion. Also, I also took the COVID-19 test, which was negative. But as we all know, it's only good for that particular day. If you get in the wrong crowd, you can get infected, so we want to continue to be safe. Also, we want to continue to ask our constituents to do the census and because that's funding, and we need to make sure, as you see, all the projects that we're trying to do, we need the funding to come back to the city of Waukegan. Also, for all of our seniors that are graduating from high school, middle school, elementary school, want to congratulate you. Certainly, it's, it's different, but as each generation, there's always going to be something different. But we got to continue to be Waukegan strong. We got to work together as a team. We're family. Need to continue to do that. Everyone continue to be safe and have a good night.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I too wanted to echo the comments regarding the 2020 census. I received a call from someone that is with the United Way, and she sent me an email stating that Waukegan has one of the lowest self-response rates in Lake County. As of today, the self-response rate is, for Waukegan, is 56%, while the overall Lake County self-response is 69, 69.9%. And I believe she told me that in 2010, the response for Waukegan was at 69%, so we're 10% lower than we were in 2010. And it's prudent that we encourage our constituents to do, do the census because the city is at risk of being undercounted and missing out on important federal funding over the next decade for school breakfast, lunch programs, roads, hospitals, childcare centers, senior centers, supplemental nutritional assistance programs and things of such that nature. So we need to encourage our constituents to fill out their 2020 census. Also, wanted to touch on a few things that are happening in the fifth ward. Residents are putting their garbage cans out days too early. Not the day before, but days too early. We have an order, ordinance stating that you can put your garbage cans out 5:00 PM prior to the night, the day of your garbage pickup. And after your garbage is picked up, please bring your garbage back from the curb. There's some residents that are leaving. There's some residents that are leaving them out several days at a time and, and going to the street to put their garbage in the garbage cans. So they need to pull those garbage cans back out. And another thing I wanted to reiterate, since we are on this stay-at-home order, there are uh a lot more cars on the streets and I wanted to encourage those cars to, to be mindful of garbage day, that you don't block those garbage cans, so advance can make sure that the garbage is picked up for your, for you or for your neighbors. Uh we touched on a little bit about flooding, I had some flooding uh several areas in my ward as well, Pine Street is one, Pine Street and Ridgeland. And uh wanted to encourage residents to please not drive through this standing water. One of the cars got stalled over there and had to be pushed out, so please do not try driving through this water. And when you drive through, what you do is cause all this water to go up into the residents' yards, the front yards, so all this water is in their front yards then, so please, if you see those streets flooded, please turn around and go the other way. I know we're speaking to the choir, but uh please go the other way, do not try to go through that water. And uh my last thing um was, there was a comment regarding the parent, Planned Parenthood facility that is in the fifth ward. When I saw the construction being done there the fall of last year, as I wa- walked past, I contacted city staff to find out exactly what was going there. And uh I was told that it was gonna be doctor's offices, medical, it's gonna be a medical building. Okay, so that's fine, you know, so and it is biz- it is zone business, so medical facilities can go there, didn't have to go through planning and zoning or anything like that. And it didn't have to come to the council for approval. But last Monday, I'm passing by and I see all these flags, Planned Parenthood. So I got an email regarding how did this happen, so that's how it happened. This organization did not um apply for their business license under Parent, Planned Parenthood. They put their business application in under an LLC. And so we had no way of knowing that it was Planned Parenthood. Also, it didn't ha- did not have to go through the planning issues because it was zoned for that uh type of business. Therefore, it didn't have to come to the council for a vote. So that's how uh we now have Planned, Planned Parenthood in our um fifth ward and it is over at what used to be the Bank of Waukegan, uh North States Bank, they sold that property and a medical company came in and bought it. So um if anyone has any more questions or concerns regarding that, I will try to answer them as best I can, but um it did not come before this council for a vote. And then lastly, I would like to congratulate all the college grads, high school grads, middle school grads and those that are going to high school, I have three grandchildren. One that is graduating from high school, I'd like to say congratulations to her, Kaylin. And I have a grandson that's coming out of the seventh, uh eighth grade going to high school, Yazea. And then I have a fifth grader that's going to high school, uh junior high school, Yaze- uh Yazrell, so I'd like to say congratulations to them and to all the Waukegan and um all the surrounding area graduates that are graduating this year. Uh like has been said, it is such an unprecedented time and uh we've never seen anything like this. And I'd like to echo what the mayor said about uh the kids congregating in the parking lots. Uh we have, we have to be mindful and careful of how we address people now because there are so many people that are going through a, a depression at this time, worried about how they're gonna make ends meet, how uh their mortgage is gonna be paid and things of that nature, so I know that people want to get out and, and do something, but um we have to be mindful how we handle that and then they too have to be mindful while they're out that uh they're not contracting this virus as well. And I think that's all I have for tonight. Good evening and you all have a, a safe um next two weeks till we meet again.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, so uh in the sixth ward, I want to thank everyone who downed in or connected in and participated in my ward meeting on Thursday evening and I apologize for the technical difficulties on my end, we did have over 50 participants and I'm really uh delighted about that, so thank you all very much. Excuse me, um as you may have be aware out there, uh we had a number of sidewalks that were done in the south central portion of our ward between Poplar Street, Ash, Hickory, Franklin, down in that area. Uh those uh projects have been completed, they did an excellent job and we move into other areas of the ward also. They did Ridgeland and uh Jackson Street and uh along Chestnut uh near Blimford School, so kudos to the uh sidewalk team that's out there, contractor team and the work they're doing. Um we did have a lot of flooding in the sixth ward too. Yesterday I was out there, I cleaned 30 uh storm sewer drains at the curb all over the, all over the ward, I did 30 of them and what I found is not, it's not just trash and in fact, it's primarily grass and, and yard waste and that, it's not being cleaned out and, and trash, a lot of trash. Uh some of those drains had uh two, three and even four inches of sediment built up and I was out there cleaning that stuff by hand. So I just asked our neighbors, one, don't put your leaves, don't put your gla- grass clip- clippings in the uh street at the curb because it washes and it clogs up those drains. When you see it's a heavy rain, if you live near one of them and you see trash collecting there, please just pick up the trash and throw it up on the grass right there. Uh that's what I did and it makes a huge difference, you can't imagine how quickly that water drains. Uh however, there are some areas in the sixth ward, particularly the 1400 block of Hickory, 1500 block of Hickory where it needs uh significant reengineering, the storm drains are, it just don't function. And every major rain we get, those houses over here are flooded out, as is um any of war- um western and Pacific and western Atlantic and the Greenwood Street corridor, so we got a lot of work that needs to be done in sixth ward regards flooding and along Johns Mansfield. I am happy to report that tomorrow morning uh we'll begin uh deconstruction of 8:30, an abandoned house at 8:30 North Avenue. The, as you may recall, last year we did the uh, or earlier this year, we did the uh building at Six Hole Nine, North Avenue, the old Democratic headquarters, that came down, it's a nice, clean uh vacant lot, so I also have my eye on three additional properties in the neighborhoods uh that we're gonna be looking at uh taking control of and polishing, so we're working on that as well. Uh I do have about uh 40, maybe 40 masks left. Uh again, thank you Mayor Cunningham for making those available to me and my uh neighbors in the sixth ward, if anyone needs a mask or a couple of masks, give me a call, I deliver, right? And uh lastly, um not good news, but I do want to report that there has been a number of shots, fire calls in the sixth ward, across the city. But we're getting a lot of those uh shots, fire calls in the sixth ward. And in the last uh, or in the, since February until now, we've had two people actually shot. Uh one around the corner from my house and one down on Center Street recently, it was a 17-year-old young man. Obviously, it's not the conduct that we approve of. Uh the police do an excellent job of investigations and follow-up, but they are reactive. The police react to incidents that occur and there's no way for them to know or any of us to know who's going to do what when, right, so. But uh to that end, and some of you may recall in the years past, I uh, I had my uh sixth ward rewards program to encourage uh part, um residents to report suspicious activity and criminal activity in the ward. I kind of put that in the balance last year because I didn't have the money. This year I'm reinstating the Keith Turner Sixth Ward Rewards Program specifically for rewards are being offered for illegal firearms and/or shots, fire calls, so even if they have a legal gun, but they're shooting it off, then I'm offering a thousand dollars reward uh for information leading to an arrest and conviction in those regards. Additionally, I'm offering $500 for any violent crime, burglary, property crime, animal abuse or neglect in the, in the sixth ward, disinformation's out on social media, on Nextdoor and Facebook, but as always, please call me if you have any questions, observations, those concerns, if you want more details about sixth ward rewards program, I'm here for, right, okay, thank you all very much and have a good night.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, um I, I'll be brief uh because a, a lot of this has already been indicated, uh but congratulations to all the graduates, um the, this is an unprecedented time, but uh, but it, it shouldn't overshadow your efforts and your accomplishments, um just uh so everyone knows that we are all proud of you. I, I would also like to send a, a thank you to all the city employees for their continued service uh to our citizens, um our first responders, health staff and essential workers, thank you to them. Um and just to go back a little bit, uh the, the, the numbers for uh COVID-19 are continuing to climb um as testing progresses, so we expected this. Um so, so it, it, to some degree, it's alarming, but to another degree, again, it was pretty much expected. Just want to ask people to continue to be cautious uh and to use good judgment when you are going out. Thank you to all the citizens for their continued uh mitigation efforts and actions. And uh God bless, thank you very much.
Without saying too much about it, but I want to send a, from all of us, Alderman, from all of you, from you to me, we want to send our prayers and thoughts to a couple of families of, of our family, to to the Motley family and to Noel in uh Noel Kishir Leper's family. Keep them in your prayers uh over the next two or three weeks uh as they uh will need uh our support. Uh with that being said, uh let us call a meeting to close, a motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Rivera, uh oh. Alderman Rivera, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moses passing care, good night, everybody, as always, take care, try to stay healthy, stay home when necessary. Uh God bless, Waukegan strong out, bye-bye.
Bye.